Good evening, and welcome to the Barville School Committee being held on September 9, 2025 at 6:00 PM at the Barville High School Media Center, 425 East Avenue, Harrisville, Rhode Island, 02830. All committee members are here. Would you please stand and join me in the fledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to agenda item number two, recognitions, and I'm going to, at this time, turn it over to Dr. Celito.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair. So, really thrilled tonight to have lots of recognition. Great to see a big crowd here, a school committee meeting, and want to start with a special recognition to Mr. Steve Rodrick, who's the owner of Construction Junction. And Mr. Rodrick has completed a number of projects in pretty much all of our schools over the last, I would say, five or six years. That includes major renovation projects at Levy, here at the high school, most recently at the middle school over the summer. So, a number of projects, and for every project that he does, Steve always gives something back to the schools. It's a donation of labor and materials and extra work that's done consistently every single time, every single job. So, just wanted to take a moment to recognize him and thank him for all that he's given back to the schools and that he's done for us over the past several years. Steve's a Barville native and alum of the high school. If anyone doubts me, I do have the 1985. Yeah? Anyone wants to see his senior picture? I think Mr. Robinson's in here as well. Maybe a few other familiar faces you may recognize, so. If anyone wants to see that later, let me know. I don't want to embarrass anyone. Don't want to embarrass anyone publicly. But it's our pleasure to give you an official citation. I'm going to read this. It says, "Be it known to all that the Barville School Department hereby extends sincere appreciation and gratitude to Steve Rodrick, Construction Junction, for donation of labor and materials to the Barville Public Schools as part of several school renovation projects. Your support of our schools is greatly appreciated. Thank you for all that you've done for our school community. Go Broncos, given this ninth day of September 2025."
Okay, and moving on, the 2026 Teachers of the Year, Barville High School, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Celito again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, again, really thrilled to be able to announce this tonight and see so many folks here for this recognition. It's really difficult every year. We have wonderful educators in all of our schools and across the district, and we're very fortunate as a school department, as a school community, to have such dedicated professional teachers that show up every day and do great things for our students each and every day of the school year. So, the process to select the Teacher of the Year every year, every school year, is it's difficult, right? It's always something that takes a lot of effort behind the scenes, so kudos to Mrs. Mayu and her committee that has established some rubrics and criteria. And the way that it works is, for the last several years, we have nominees from each school building that's representing their school as the nominee for Teacher of the Year, and that goes to the overall district committee, who has a really difficult job because everyone on this list is really deserving. So, it's a difficult job, and they follow the, you know, they follow the rules and the regulations that we've put in place, and then they select the recipient for the, selected the recipient for the 2026 Teacher of the Year. But we want to recognize all of the nominees from each school tonight. We have an official citation for each of them, and then our 2026 Barville Teacher of the Year. So, the citations, I'm going to have Chair Lacy pass these out. Yes, Madam Chair? I will read one while you pass that out. So, it reads, "Official Citation. Be hereby known to all that the Barville School Department offers its sincerest congratulations and best wishes to Jackie Keeble, in recognition of selection as the 25-26 Barville High School Teacher of the Year. Barville School Department extends our congratulations, thank you for your service, and to the town of Barville."
You want me to bring them over there?
Yes, you can call them up.
Okay.
Okay, next is our middle school nominee, recipient for the middle school Teacher of the Year. Citation reads the same. "Be hereby known that the Barville School Department offers its sincerest congratulations and best wishes to Heather Ray, recognition selection, Barville Middle School Teacher of the Year." And from Steer Farm Elementary, congratulations, nominee for the 25-26 Teacher of the Year from Steer Farm, Bill Latandras Jr. And representing Callahan School, "Be hereby known to all, Barville School Department offers its sincerest congratulations and best wishes, Gail Delfriet." And our final recipient as the Teacher of the Year nominee from AT Levy and the 2025-26 Barville Teacher of the Year, again, this is an official citation, "Be hereby known to all, the Barville School Department offers its sincerest congratulations and best wishes to Heidi Cairo, in recognition of your selection as the 2026 Barville Teacher of the Year. Behalf of the Barville School Department, we extend our thanks for your service to the town of Barville, given this ninth day of September 2025." We're going to ask all of our nominees to come up for a photo op. Picture here, please.
School community.
Sure.
Oh, I knew that was coming. Just crossed the two strokes.
we're going to take a little 10-minute, 15-minute break, and we're going to enjoy some cake and, I think there's water over there, so. Justin, make him water. Okay, welcome back to the Barville School Committee meeting. Thank you for everybody who attended that little ceremony. It was nice. So, I'm going to move on to agenda item number three, consent agenda, approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 12, 2025 regular meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Donovan Allen, seconded by Sean Boson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, warrants and invoices?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the school warrant number two for the month of August dated September 9, 2025. Grand total expenditure is $2,828,690.39.
Second? Okay, motion made by Donovan Allen, seconded by Jill Calipari. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we have one bid.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the bid for anytime plumbing and heating. Master plumber, $125 per hour.
I'll second that. Okay, motion made by Donovan Allen, seconded by Sylvia St. Pierre. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Agenda item number four, presentation by the public to the school committee. I don't believe we have any tonight, so I'm going to move right on to agenda item number five, public comment. And it doesn't look like we have any public comment, so I'm going to move on. Agenda item number six, personnel, leave of absence, retirements, resignations, and appointments.
Madam Chair, make a motion to accept the resignation of Brianna Roy, TLC paraprofessional William, is that supposed to be William L. Callahan? Yes, William L. Callahan, effective September 1, 2025, and also Ashley Spavold, paraprofessional at Barville Middle School, effective August 15, 2025.
I'll second. Okay, motion made by Donovan Allen, seconded by Sylvia St. Pierre. All in favor?
Aye.
And Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to receive and file the subsequent appointments.
I'll second that. Okay, motion made by Donovan Allen, seconded by Sylvia St. Pierre. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, agenda item number seven, old business, FYI, 26th Barville School District budget update.
Make the motion, receive and file.
Second.
Motion made by Donovan to receive and file, second by Jill Calipari, all in favor?
Aye.
And agenda item number eight, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have a few items for your information this month. I want to start with opening day, opening day for staff went very well. Staff and students, the following day, as you know, staff comes in for two days and then on the third day, students returned. Openings for staff went very well and for students went equally as well. Just great to see teachers and paraprofessionals and students back in our schools and ready to go. Mrs. Mayo and I welcomed the staff on Monday with the positive message of collaboration and support. Unveiled our theme for the year, our theme for the year is be a leader, be a learner, be a Bronco. On Wednesday, the students went, came back and all went well. As you know, there's been some administrative changes this year, we have new principals at the middle school. Some movement with new principal at Levy and Dr. Moseley over at Callahan returning to that role, that administrative role. So Mr. Valino at the middle school, Mr. Brissette at Levy, Dr. Moseley at Callahan, as well as our admin team at the high school. All of our returning administrators across the district, by all accounts, everything went very well. We made an effort the first couple of days to stop in all schools and talk to staff and kind of check in as we rolled back into action. And again, it was really a feeling of overall excitement to be back. And it seems like everyone's looking forward to having a wonderful school year. So again, just great to be back in, back into the swing of things so quickly with the start of the school year. Moving on, wanted to mention that our certified nursing assistant course, the CNA course, ran over the summertime in coordination with Zamborano. Recently ended and we had eight students complete the program. They're now eligible to take the exam to become certified nursing assistants. We had one student who passed, who took the test, the exam and passed, so she will be certified. I'm not sure where the other seven are, but they're all ready to take that exam when they can. So just wanted to mention that and give a shout out to Mr. Ferraro and all of our friends over at Zamborano for coordinating the program. Really well run, a great opportunity for our students and for them to really have a foot in the door, if you will, in a possible career. One of the great things about the CNA program and being a CNA, specifically at Zamborano because it's a state-run institution, is the CNAs there have a union and if you are hired as part of that union, then you are entitled to have education paid for through the union. So you can actually work as a CNA and then work towards your nursing license and it would be paid for by the CNA union. So great opportunity for kids to stay local, who may not want to go far from home and get their foot in the door in the health field. So congratulations to them on getting that program up and running. And finally, Wright has released guidance on artificial intelligence or AI. Our policy and protocols were adopted last year, as you know, and they align well with the guidance. It's really grounded in some legal guidance, legal counsel was vetting our policy last year. So it doesn't look like any major changes will be needed to that policy. So I reached out to Attorney Scunzio, he's gonna meet with our administrative team next week. He's gonna review any changes in general laws that may impact any of our policies. So that includes the artificial intelligence cellphone policy that'll go into effect next year through the Rhode Island general law that will basically ban cell phones in all schools. So we'll be ready for that for next year and then the attendance guidance that came out from Wright as well. We'll incorporate that into our current attendance practices. So he'll be here next week, working with our administrators to go over some of those things. And we'll keep you posted as we develop our protocols and policies based on those changes. And that concludes my report, happy to take any questions if you have any.
The CNA program, is that just for seniors or juniors?
I think it's open to seniors and juniors, there's a minimum age, I think minimum age is 17.
Oh, okay.
18?
That's wonderful.
Have to be 18, minimum age is 18.
That's great.
Can I add something to that? My daughter has gone through to be a health person in health and in order to do that, she had to have so many hours working with patients and this is a fantastic idea, these kids are already gonna have their 200 hours or whatever it is they have. That's great.
Yeah, they get their hours right onsite at Zamborano.
Yep, wonderful.
Yeah, that is great.
And is that exclusively a summer program?
It's outside of school time, so we, when you develop that, it can't take place during the school day, during classes, because those kids need to be in classes, so it's outside of school time. We ran it as a summer program, but there's some discussion about possibly running it after school and weekends. There's so many hours that have to be completed, makes it difficult during the school year. So for the initial year, we ran it as a summer program.
Special sports and.
Yeah, that makes it, makes it a little more challenging to try to run it during the year. That biomedical program at the Barville High School's really taken off. We've got an EMT component to it, so kids can be certified as an EMT. We've now got the CNA component to it, looking at expanding it to a couple of other fields that I don't want to mention quite yet, in case they don't come through, but stay tuned.
That's great. Any other questions for Dr. Salito?
Okay, I'm gonna move on to agenda item number nine, administrator's report, which will be deferred until the October meeting. Agenda item number 10, report from the school committee student representative, unfortunately Ben couldn't make it tonight, so. Moving on to agenda item number 11, reports of school committees, subcommittees. Does anybody have anything?
Not yet.
Yeah, BPAC is tomorrow night, so. And I don't think any of the school improvement teams have met yet, right? All right, so agenda item number 12, correspondence and communication, I don't believe we have any tonight. Okay, agenda item number 13, new business, homeschool application.
I make a motion to receive and file the homeschool applicants.
Second.
Oh, sorry, to approve the homeschool applicant, sorry. You threw me for a loop there Sylvia.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Sylvia, second by Jill Calipari, all in favor?
Aye.
And we have something like 70 something this year?
72 right now.
72?
Yeah, it says on. Okay, and next is the NEASC decennial report. Dr. Salito, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. So as you know, our NEASC visit here at the high school occurred last school year. Decennial visit every 10 years, they come out and they do a really rigorous visit and, excuse me, a difficult process for the high school, it's very tedious and long, lots of boxes to check off and lots of things to do, lots of preparation. But it's really worth it in the end, as you get a detailed report of the different standards and where we stand as a school in regards to our, you know, our progress in each of those areas according to the NEASC standards. So their report was released to us a while ago, a couple of months ago. So tonight, we have Mr. Lazareschi and Mr. Canoyer and Mrs. Krunker here to kind of go over the NEASC visiting team report. This will officially mark our public release of the report, which will then be available on our website and any location that we, you know, we want to drop it off, say Jesse's library or those kind of locations, if we want to put a hard copy, we can do that as well. But it'll be posted publicly on our website and a link to that will be sent out to all of our families as well. Overall, it was a fantastic report, lots of great work happening at the high school that they commended. And I will turn it over to Mr. Lazareschi to kind of go over that.
Thank you, Dr. Salito and members of the school committee for inviting myself and members of the high school administrative team to review the report. So as Dr. Salito said, this concluded last year in the report. To kind of give you an overview of where we started from, we started in the spring of 2021 where we had our self-reflection and self-study, which kind of guides the process, so we kind of take a look at what we're doing and score ourselves as to what needs improvement and what doesn't need improvement. We moved through that with the collaborative conference visit in the spring of 2023. And then we took their input and we made changes and developed different committees, we involved the students. We had, it's a very collaborative process, so we had a lot of people in the school community. Christie Craig and Mr. Goodwin were integral in moving this process forward. We took that information and we moved it towards a decennial accreditation visit, which gave us an opportunity to show the work that we did as a school community based on the feedback that they gave us. NEASC has foundational elements and these are really their core beliefs of what they believe are components of a successful high school. So we can see as we go through, learning is an important component of that. Student learning, professional practices, learning support, learning resources. What type of environment we provide, is the building and facilities properly maintained? Do we provide a physically safe environment? Do we have a school improvement team that's active? Is the plan implemented, written curriculum included in the scope and sequence for each course? We did a lot of work around our vision of a graduate to prepare for this visit. And these were the elements that we really scored ourselves on at the start and that we looked at improving based on the feedback that we received from the committee. As they ranked us with our foundational elements, you can see on the far right, they felt as though we met all of those core skills or core beliefs that they felt we needed as a successful high school. When we look at the student learning piece that's circled there, that's kind of a tricky one because we often get caught in the cycle of curriculum implementation, especially when we deal with the Department of Education. So when we look at that category there, you can see later on in the report that at the school level, structurally at the district level, we had the curriculum pieces in place that we needed to have in place. And, you know, it's tricky when we look at implementation cycles and the things that we have going on in the school. But we can see on the far right that even those categories that we didn't meet at the collaborative conference, we were able to put together plans and structures to get ourselves in the place where we met all of the requirements of those foundations.
Mr. Laz, if I can interrupt for a quick second. So the, when you're looking at this graphic, just remember the decennial visitors rating, the NEASC visit that just concluded, their rating is the far column to the right. The rest of those were the ratings that were part of the process building up to this, whether it's the two-year report or the five-year report or your own self-study. So several of the areas that were not met earlier were then met by the decennial visit. So the only area that did not meet the standard is student learning and as Mr. Lazareschi alluded to, it's really because there's some curriculum areas that are not fully implemented yet. And we're waiting for there to be a approved curriculum in some areas by the Department of Ed that we can choose that curriculum and kind of test run it to make sure it's right for us and put that in place. So that is really the only reason for the student learning objective that came up as does not make the standard.
Thank you, Dr. Salito. So this kind of gives an overview of what Dr. Salito said. So it's, it's really a curriculum cycle issue that we look at as we start to move through. And you'll see as we look at the final pieces of the report, at the classroom level and where it's most important, we had things in place where we needed them to have in place consistently across the school level. There we go. So this is, this is a further breakdown of, I got one screen on one side and one screen on the other, there we go. So this is kind of a breakdown of the priority areas which are under the foundational elements. And you can see that in that first one, it supports what we spoke about in that curriculum slide. So the school will compete, complete the written curriculum in a consistent format for all courses and departments, including units of study, all right? So you can see as we move through these priority areas that they looked at when they analyzed what was taking place in the school. There's components of school culture, curriculum, instruction, assessment, bless you, looking at consistency across classrooms, school policies and procedures. Do we have a formal process to assess and communicate individual learner and whole school progress? And we also spent a lot of time with our vision of a graduate, which really drives and is a common thread in our school community, right? That really drives what we do and sets a focus. And then we can see as we move through, there's a component regarding counseling services and what structures we use to ensure that students receive the support they need socially, emotionally, academic, career-wise, college counseling. We also have a component or priority area around civic engagement. What we do as a school community to foster civic engagement, social and personal responsibility. And then the last two, we looked at learning spaces, or they looked at learning spaces, were our classrooms, our library, our facilities appropriate and equitable? As we move from classroom to classroom, was furniture appropriate, technology to support student learning? And then the last one was our school improvement plan. Who was involved in the school improvement team? Did the plan align with our vision of a graduate? Were students involved in that process and how that moved along and functioned in the school environment? And these were the commendations that they had as they moved through for those days, which if you look through them, you see some consistency or some things that stand out. The first one, when we look at culture and climate, the relationships that the students have with each other and the relationships that the teachers have with the students was something that was a consistent standout through all stages of this process. So that's something to be extremely proud of because we know especially, well, at any level, we know that's an important component of student success. So those relationships were something that was a standout. A physically safe environment where students articulated to the group that they felt safe in school physically and emotionally. Our curriculum piece was aligned, was consistent. We had a variety of course offerings, we had a variety of, we had increased student enrollment in AP courses, career skills in grades nine, our PBGR classes. The support that we provided students to ensure that they understood the vision of a graduate and they know how they functioned within that format. The defense, the digital portfolio and defense structure was something that the team was extremely impressed by. The monitoring that Josh Goodwin does with students moving towards completing the vision of a graduate and moving towards graduation was something that they thought was also outstanding. We looked at our post-secondary exposure, increase in college and career information available to students. A lot of that was done through our Bronco Focus Hour, that flexible learning block that we implemented a few years ago. They also identified our involvement with Special Olympics and our unified champion school status is something that was also outstanding. We also did some work around elevating student voice. We had a principal advisory committee and Ben Pena was on that committee, where students could have some input on policies and procedures at the school level to ensure that students felt that they were fair, that they understood what they were and understood why we had them in place. We also had a component in that recognized for civic engagement. We have a teacher of the month recognition program, which was actually started by a principal advisory committee where they sent a Google sheet out to faculty members to identify, actually to students to identify a teacher that was the teacher of the month for that month. So it was totally student-driven. We also received some accolades for our community service requirement. Our instructional settings, our technology, our CTE programs, as Dr. Salito alluded to with our CNA program, was something that was also a standout. The student involvement in those programs and also how the students felt in being involved in those programs were pretty impressive. You know, they felt connected to the school, they felt that they were career-ready, they were moving in a pathway that they wanted to go. And then they also looked at some of the improvements that we made from the first visit. A lot of them were around the library media center, increasing students' access to books, increasing students' access to the library media center and it becoming more of a hub of the school, right? So a lot, a lot of positive accolades across multiple different areas there. So what does this mean for our school community? So NEASC is an accreditation, is a mark of quality and integrity. It validates the work that our community has done to ensure high standards for our school. The process serves as an opportunity to reflect on areas of success and areas in need of improving upon which we continuously strive for high-quality learning experiences for all students. And that's all we have for you guys tonight. So just, you know, just one quick, you know, when I say collaborative process, not only myself, but obviously members of the administrative team, faculty members, we had multiple committees. Our PD days for those two years were completely aligned with the things that we needed to improve on. So I think when we look at this report, it's really an indication of the amount of collaboration and work that takes place here every day with the people that come here every day, so. So, I think it's really a positive indicator of, of the things that take place here at Barville High School.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What, as, it looks like you've done an excellent job. And I just wanted to know, do you still have some things that you want to improve on?
Yeah, sure, what, so, so one of the things that was a recommendation was around common planning time and teacher common planning time. So, so we spent some time this summer making adjustments to our schedule to, to get that something that happened this year. So, I think one of, that's a great question. And one of the things that I think we have done well over the years is we take this report seriously. We take the input that they give us seriously and along the way, we make improvements. So, when, when they do come, we're not making changes or adjusting things the month before. It's something that's ingrained in our school community and it's something important that we take seriously because we want to improve. So, we're constantly looking at the feedback, trying to make changes. Some things are easy to change as we look at them, some things take a little time to, to kind of, you know, reinforce. But we've made some changes around the way students present their senior portfolio this year. That's going to be something that's going to be positive, that's going to open it up to the Barville community a little more, which I think is going to be great. So, we take that feedback seriously and we use it to make improvements. And I think the staff has really valued the improvements that we've made because we've tried to make them part of the process as well.
Now, do, do they come back and do some kind of?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, so it's a continuous cycle, as painful as that sounds, so it's a continuous cycle. And along the way, we have to provide updates as to the changes and improvements we've made based on the feedback that they've given us. So, we have a, a check-in period coming up this year that will provide some feedback around how we've adjusted the schedule, the common planning time, how we've used the Bronco Focus Hour a little differently, our focus on career and college readiness. So, we, it's important to keep up to date with those priorities, so that way we're a little bit ahead of the curve.
Well, I think all in all, everybody deserves a big congratulations, the administrative team, the teachers and the students. This, this is wonderful, this is, you couldn't ask for anything better than this really, so congratulations to everybody.
Yeah, I think it's pretty cool to be able to see, like, you forget all the things that are being done all the time. So, it's really cool to be able to look at that and just see all the amazing work that you guys do all the time, especially in a world where you get so focused on the negativity. It's really nice to see all the positivity that, that we see all the time and that we can share with the community, so that's awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Huge congratulations.
Mr. Laz? I go to the NEASC committee and everyone at the high school, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very proud.
Anybody else have any discussion about that or? Okay, so, where was I? Okay, under new business, discussion and vote eliminating policy twenty-one twenty job description.
Madam Chair, if you'd like, I can give some context on this policy on this request. So, the job description policy that you have in front of you tonight, I put this on there because I think this was developed at, at a time where there were a number of new jobs that were being developed and had to be approved at the school committee. At this point, we're really not developing any, any new jobs, this policy hasn't been used in, in my tenure here. Even positions that were created, quite honestly, they were created, I informed the school committee, but there was never any kind of formal vote on, on those, which I, I think is probably the, the way I would like to see things happen in the future. Develop a, a position, communicate that out to the committee and, and get feedback on an individual basis, similar to what I do in my, my weekly update. And then certainly I would be open to any feedback on those positions. The reason this is so burdensome is that if we do create a position and we have to go through the formal policy requirements, we would have to bring it to at least two meetings to have a first reading of that job description and then a second reading and approval of that job description. So, if we created a job that we wanted to post tomorrow, we'd have to wait at least two months before we could post for that position or hire someone. So, that's why I put, I put this in front of the committee tonight, asking for a discussion or, or a vote if you would agree that it should be eliminated. And if, if not, we'll, we'll keep it in place, but wanted to at least have that discussion with the committee to get your intake, your input.
I make a motion to withdraw that policy?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Donnaison Allen, second by Sean Boson, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask a question? The first reading is, I'm looking at this document of the, the old job description policy. Is that zero-zero, so that's two thousand this policy was put in place?
Yes.
Twenty-five years ago?
Yep.
Okay.
The fact that two thousand was twenty-five years ago is still. But yes, it was twenty-five years ago.
I know, right?
Wow, that just hit me.
I know.
That's, that's somewhat more consistent with the, the current practices regarding hiring too. So, I mean, we used to be part of that hiring approval process.
Correct.
So, if you as a superintendent finds a need for a particular position, it makes sense that's consistent with that.
Yes, thank you.
And we'll still be made informed of anything.
Yeah, obviously we'll still inform the committee if there's any new, new positions that are created or any change to a job description and certainly keep you informed of that.
Okay, anybody else have? Moving on to agenda item number fourteen, committee comments on agenda items. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add or say or? No, okay. Agenda item number fifteen, pending issues, the artificial field update.
I have no updates at this time.
Okay, space needs committee update.
I do have an update on the space.
Well, there you go.
Kind of an update, so I, I met with Chair Lacy and committee member Allen to discuss the space needs committee and the proposal, the feasibility study proposal that was brought to the town council and the request to have a little more information. So, over the course of the next month or so, I'm going to be working on putting a, a brief report together that will have some numbers, enrollment numbers, enrollment projections, building capacity numbers, those kind of things. And I'd like to bring that back to the committee in the October meeting, if I can get everything done by the October meeting. Put a, a small report together for discussion purposes at the meeting and that could inform our decision about possibly funding the feasibility study.
And I can just make another additional comment because we attended the council meeting where we kind of presented to them that request. And there is definitely an appetite for what we're trying to do, but to, I think Councilman Anderson's credit, I guess I could say, you know, he analyzed the, the, the company that's going to be involved in the process. And he pointed out some things that were a bit concerning for him that I think we probably need a better answer for them. Primarily was the, the history of the company recommending like new construction. And, you know, we've got a number of buildings in this town already and that are well-kept and up to date. So, and the appetite in the community might not be there for something like that. So, we have to consider, that's a voter initiative, you know? So, if that company comes back to us and recommends, you know, a new school's the best way to go, that might not be an option we could move forward on or at least confidently try to move forward on. So, his point was, you know, can we accept? And, and the question that I now have for, for Dr. Salito, which I think he'll, he'll bring to the table for us, is, you know, some of these recommendations, do we, are we bound by them if we want to do something as it relates to reimbursements from the state and things like that? So, there's a lot of moving pieces, but some food for thought was brought to our attention from the council that I think, I think it, it behooves them to step up and, and help us with this because ultimately it's, they're the ones that are providing the funding to us in the beginning anyway. So, we'll have to keep you posted to look for that analysis. And I think with that, we could maybe have a little bit stronger footing to at least request again that they, if, maybe it's share the burden with us because we've, what, tapped into most of our undesignated funds over the last few years.
It's shrinking for sure.
Yeah, and so there's not much there that wouldn't necessarily be fair for us to, to, to have to foot that entire bill when, when the net, you know, result of the benefit falls back to the town, you know? So, in any case, it was a good meeting, I think that he brought up some reasonable points that I think we're going to consider. And I look forward to October and see where we go from there, so.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, and moving on to agenda item number sixteen, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion made by Donnaison Allen, second by Sylvia St. Pierre, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.